Good evening, we're going to open up tonight's July 28th Board of Selectmen meeting. And I'll open up to see if there are any public comments. Okay, Howard first and then Bob Bowers.
Howard Hoke, Chaplain, King Solomon's Lodge Number 14. I don't want to waste time if it's inappropriate, but I'm here to address potentially the tax exempt status of the lodge. And if this is the right moment, you tell me when.
If you look at the agenda, it's on our new business section when Chris McAllister will do our presentation. So perhaps you could wait till then.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Howard. Bob Bowers?
Good evening, thank you. This isn't really a comment, it's a question. I was at the Housing Commission meeting the other day, a couple of weeks ago, and there was a lot of discussion about the development of incentives for affordable housing by Twin Pines. And so I'm coming to ask the selectmen, because I know you keep your finger on the pulse of the community, what you know about that and what you can tell us if you would please let us know what's going on with that. So maybe each of you can let me know. Janet, do you know what's going on?
Bob, no one has come, they have not made an application to the planning board yet.
Yeah, but I'm asking whether you as selectmen actually know what's going on with it.
I've only heard things. I don't know whether they're facts. So I really can't comment. We'll wait and see. Once they make a proposal to the planning board, then we'll have a better idea of what they have in mind.
Either the other, you know anything about that?
That's similar to the Housing Commission. The Housing Commission has not heard their two are waiting for to come before the planning board, when it will become public.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
John? I had a question on when you go into the non-public section RSA 91A3H, is that recorded? And if it is recorded or not, do any of what happens in the non-public become public knowledge? And when would that be?
Well, there are minutes taken, but those are sealed. And I'll look to get the legal.
Yeah, the meeting is not recorded, but minutes are taken as they are with all public meetings and non-public meetings. Once the selectmen, the selectmen can decide to seal them if they feel it's necessary. And at some point in time, they can be released when the selectmen feel that the reason that they seal them no longer exists. So say, for example, with if they were considering purchasing land, let's say, for as an example, if at some point they actually bought the land in question, they would likely release the minutes because the the reason they sealed them was to keep that information away from the seller, the property seller. So some generally they at some point will become a public?
Basically, it's totally up to the discretion of the selectmen and to
Correct.
seal them or not seal them. And we wouldn't know whether they're sealed or not.
No, you would know, because if you look at the meeting minutes, that that the decision to seal them is in the public meeting minutes. So when you look at the meeting minutes, if they went into non-public session, you know when they went in, you see the roll call vote that was taken.
Okay.
Then when they come back into the public session, then they make a decision as to whether they're going to seal them or not. So that that is in the public record.
Okay. And then I had another question probably from Chief. Did we try to set up any of these speed cameras on the bunker hill to slow down the issues that came up at the last selectman meeting, the walkers and bikers?
We did. We set it up on one section of bunker road. So we have some speed data from that section, the narrows, as it were. And then we have it set up now currently on the, what they call it, the straightaway, the yes, straightaway on bunker. So we have some speed data from that. And we're gathering more as we speak. And I have some pricing information that I'll share with the folks from bunker road tomorrow on new speed signs.
Great, thank you. Sir?
Okay, anything else under public comment? Okay, old business, kind of morphed into that. So I'll go to new business. Library trustees recommendation for appointment of Joanne Palmasano would like to.
Yes, Mary Ann McEnroe submitted her resignation in June. We have that vacancy and we love your help. If you could appoint Joanne, she is currently serving as an alternate and is very enthusiastic about filling this vacancy until the next election.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move to appoint Joanne Palmasano to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mary Ann McEnroe.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Mary Ann give an indication why she resigned?
She did. Thank you. I don't have any more information for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next up, library trustees request for funds from the Library Building Maintenance Fund Capital Reserve for Roof Repair. Crystal?
Yes, good evening. I know some of you may recall last year's roof leak in 2021 and subsequent repairs. While those repairs took place, we also received a roof inspection which detailed items, areas of the roof that would need repair. And so this request for funds is based on repairs needed this year. And I believe you received the memo detailing the proposed, the cost, proposed cost, which has been approved by the Board of Trustees, Board of Library Trustees. So the total we are requesting is not to exceed $61,787. And that accounts for roof repair of two large sections of the roof, two areas of snow guard addition, and a 10% contingency as outlined in the memo.
Any questions?
So Crystal, the whole roof was inspected, even sections that had recently been repaired, is that correct?
Correct. So it included the the small, very small section that was repaired last year in that inspection. And this takes a look at the roof as a as a whole. One of the other things that was included for you is the proposal itself, which outlines the sections of roof that are being looked at for repair this year.
Did Mike Mayo give you any indication how long this repair will last?
Yeah. So in the inspection, he basically said that with repairs, these two areas will not need replacing for for many, many years to come. Of course, it's never based on weather and whatnot, you can't ever predict for sure. It's a slate roof. So these are two, two big sections of slate roof, but that the repairs would help give those areas more life. Yeah, there are other areas in the inspection that surfaced, which we'll start to address with the budget processing and capital improvement plan with this year. But that's not being addressed under this repair here.
So will we reach a point when the entire roof of the library will be repaired and in one piece?
Yes, yes, there is a light at the end of the tunnel.
Seems to be a recurring theme here with this roof.
Yeah, well, and as you know, I have only been here for one year, but it seems like there were a few years during the pandemic where we hadn't kept up with repairs. And that's why it seems like quite a lot more now. It looks like over the next five, maybe seven years, will get us through the cycle of things noted during the inspection we received last year. And that will include the slate portions, one area that will is recommended to be fully replaced, which is the oldest section of roof. And also, we have several flat pieces of roof that are like a membrane. And those of you who have seen the library building may know it's actually because of the additions, there's kind of several sections or several buildings. So.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I also just meant to say this, it's in the memo, but this would, these funds would come from the Library Building Maintenance Fund, which the selectmen are agents to expend.
And I, yes, Bill?
So Crystal, is there some way that we can get a schedule of all of the repairs that go back? So we sort of have some sort of history to see this because you've been here a year, but we've all been on the doing this for several years. And it seems to me that frequently this topic comes up. And I would like to see like a retrospective schedule of the repairs that have been done and which part of the roofs and whether any of the ones that were done are being redone again and so on.
I
Must be that somewhere in the records of the.
I don't have it listed as a schedule anywhere. So it's something we've been trying to piece together and we can certainly work on that, leading towards the larger sections that will be looked at in the future. And
One thing you can do is go back to see the money that was withdrawn out of the accounts to do it and then
Certainly.
trace it that way because it seems to me we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this, these various sections of roof over the last decade.
Yeah, I can certainly look into that.
I think that would be helpful in the upcoming budget process, as you can imagine, the
Yes.
There are like, I mean, a lot of demands in a difficult year. And I think we need to better understand what's going on with this particular project as opposed to all the others in town.
Absolutely. I also just want to be clear that whatever repairs have been done in the past, whether they have been to standards or not, and how much those costs doesn't change the fact that we do need to take care of the building that we have now with the roof condition we have now to prevent further damage to the inside of the building, to the collection. And so that is the concern at hand today is the repairs, which frankly, even from looking at the roof from the ground, you can see some of the areas that certainly do need repair.
I understand, but I think it'd be helpful and more convincing if we could see what's happened and what's what's projected.
Of course.
And I think we have a little over 100,000 in the capital reserve.
Yes, I received the balance just a few days ago from Joe Cubitt, trustee of trust funds, and the current balance is $129,921.85 as of two days ago.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move we approve the request for funds in the amount of $61,787 to be withdrawn from the Library Capital Reserve Fund for building maintenance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, we have several recommendations from you on tax exemptions as prepared.
Yes, this is not a pleasant thing to do today. However, I have a, I have two denials I'm putting forth to the board recommendations. The first one is the New England Forest Refoundation. This this entity applies every year and they are denied every year because there's a three-pronged test that one must meet to initially to initially apply and qualify for. It's to be owned, used, and occupied by them directly for the purposes of which they are established. And you cannot occupy vacant land, and that's all they have in town. They are in current use, so they do they do get a decent break. So but I do recommend denying that again.
Okay, I'll move that we deny the request of the New England Forest Refoundation for tax exemption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This one I'd like to read my recommendation for because it's quite it's in depth. So if you don't mind, first I'll explain the definition of what a charitable entity is. The term charitable as used to describe a corporation, society, or other organization within the scope of this chapter, including RSA 7223 and 7223K, showing in a corporation, society, or organization established and administered for the purpose of performing and obligated by its charter for otherwise or charter, otherwise perform some service of public good or welfare advancing the spiritual, physical, intellectual, social, and economic well-being of the general public or to a substantial indefinite segment of the general public that includes residents of the state of New Hampshire with no pecuniary profit or benefit to its officers or members or any restrictions which combine its benefits or services to such officers or members or those of any related organization. The fact that an organization's activities are not conducted for for profit shall not in itself be sufficient to render the organization charitable. For purposes of this chapter, nor shall the organization's treatment under the United States Internal Revenue Code of 86 as amended, this section is not intended to abrogate the meaning of charitable under the common law of New Hampshire. That's the statute. So this is what happened. In a recent Board of Tax and Land Appeals, BTLA order regarding the Masonic Lodge in the town of Osapi, the board found Osapi aired in granting a charitable exemption to the masons. In light of that order, I must recommend denial of the charitable exemption for the Masonic Association of King Solomons for the following reasons. An excerpt taken from the Grand Lodge of the New Hampshire Free and Accepted Mason website titled, What is Freemasonry? It is not a charity, but recognizes that the tenet of charity as a foundation of love for humanity is a duty for all masons. As part of my research into statewide precedents, I requested further guidance from the Office of the Attorney General. They forwarded to us the guidebook, the guidebook for New Hampshire charitable organizations. Registered charitable organizations must comply with its reporting obligations. In addition to their filing status with the IRS, the organization must file with the New Hampshire Secretary of State every five years. They must also register and annually file reports with the Attorney General's charitable trust unit. This subject organization has not complied with any of these requirements, and they are not listed as a registered charitable organization on the New Hampshire Secretary of State website. Also, according to the guidebook for New Hampshire charitable organizations, a nonprofit is any organization not organized for as for-profit business is considered to be a nonprofit. While some nonprofits are charities, some are not. Examples of nonprofits that are not charities are the masons or Elks, veterans groups like the American Legion, or cooperatives like credit unions. Furthermore, under state statutes title 418, Paternal Benefits Societies, Section 418.23, taxation, it's titled taxation. Notes notes that these societies shall be exempt from all and every state, county, and municipal tax other than taxes on real estate and office equipment. Lastly, the BTLA made it clear in their 20, May 27, 2022 order against the town of Osapi that the property taxes for the Masonic Lodge were incorrectly exempted. As a result, the town of Osapi was ordered to collect three prior years of property taxes from the Masonic Lodge, back to the date of the last revaluation. The town will also be subject to additional oversight from these rulings, including an order to fully audit every property they are currently granting religious, charitable, and educational exemptions to and report findings back to the BTLA. All relevant information in this recommendation is available for review in the binder here. Everything here is available. Therefore, I cannot recommend to the board to accept the exemption.
Okay. Questions? I'll open it up since we know that Howard wants to speak. Howard?
Thank you. I don't have quite as much information. I would ask, could I get a copy of what you just read? Some not right this second, but I'll.
I have one right this second if you'd like it.
We'll take care of that later. I won't be able to go over details and I don't, I don't want to question it so much as I want to understand it in the long term. I don't know about the lodge in Osapi or what its foundation is exactly. One of the things that I'm quite sure is different about King Solomon's Lodge Number 14 is that in the 1862, in one of the legislative sessions, the state of New Hampshire granted King Solomon's Lodge Number 14 in Wilmot, now Elkins, permission to be incorporated as a charitable and benevolent business. They granted permission for the corporation to have transactions, buying, selling things, including real estate and other assets in the amount of $5,000 annually in 1862. That'd be worth $151,954 today. And if they were talking about the amount of property that could be purchased in 1862 for $5,000, we're in the millions of dollars today, not millions, 1.2 or something like that. Our assets, I believe, are well below that. And naturally, I would like, we'd like to continue the nonprofits, not the tax exempt status. We are registered in the state of New Hampshire as a domestic nonprofit corporation, but I do understand there's a difference between a nonprofit corporation and a charitable organization. That would be the association and I have the ID number, if you'd like it, 1-868-69. And we've been current and up to date with that for a really long time. King Solomon's Lodge Number 14 is also a properly registered domestic nonprofit corporation in the state of New Hampshire. That had lapsed in the early 1980s when it was still listed as being in Wilmot. But we paid the fines and and they updated it so that we are now, whatever you call it, properly registered as a domestic nonprofit corporation. And our, that ID number is 67144. Did you get that? Okay. And I understand the reference to the IRS code, which seems to have little or no bearing in New Hampshire. So the the impact on the lodge of having the tax exempt status revoked would put a severe financial strain because we do maintain the building as best we can. It's, we forego many pleasantries in terms of repairs because we simply don't have the money. And if we had to pay taxes, we'd have to generate income. And one source of income would be charging the town of New London for trailer parking for the boat ramp. So I would, I calculate that it is approximately six double-sized parking lots, parking spots per day, per week. And that leaves us enough room to use the parking lot when we need to and have trailers park. That would be the equivalent of 12 individual parking spots. And I believe that the, we'd have to settle on an agreement, but we, that would be one source of income for us. We don't presently charge any community group for using the lodge building. Lions Club meets there now twice a month. We don't charge the public for using the building. And we don't give special treatment to members of our lodge or other lodges, lodges. They don't pay either. We do raise money from the public. We use that money for support of our scholarship program. And we use that money to support a Community Builders Award, which is irregular, but we'd like it to be regular, but an irregular award that we give to a community organization. And it's a cash award as well as recognition in support of whatever their mission is. It might be Habitat for Humanity. It might be the Visiting Nurse Association, Boy Scouts, and so on. So again, I think, I believe, a fundamental difference between our lodge and practically any other lodge is the act of the legislature from 1862. The reason I think it's likely that that's a fundamental difference is that our attorneys were jaw-dropped shocked to discover that King Solomon's Lodge, still in existence today, is one of fewer than five organizations that enjoy that status that are still in existence today. I doubt Osapi is one of those organizations because of their number 74, I think, as a lodge, which means that they didn't form until very close to 1862. And according to our attorneys, it was very soon after 1862 that the legislator, legislature stopped doing that sort of thing. New laws were enacted that provided a different process that organizations would have to go through. So I would urge you to consider continuing the exemption or offering a suggestion about how we might make the money to cover the expense.
So I have two questions, Howard.
Okay.
The first is, so the state legislature action, was it done in a statute? What's the enabling authority? Is there an RSA?
No, the legislative action was signed by the, I don't know the right title, the head of the Senate, the head of the House of Representatives, and the governor of the state of New Hampshire.
So the Speaker of the House and the House President, the Senate President, is that what you're saying?
That sounds right.
Do you have that document?
Not in my possession. I think Kim might have received a photocopy or photograph. Didn't? Forgive me.
I'm Chris.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm not here often.
Not, well, I should know better. Anyway, somebody asked us to provide a copy of our charter and a copy of, well, and we chose to provide a copy of the document from the legislature, both of which are very hard to read. And I assumed that got done. I don't know who requested it. But if it didn't get done.
I received the application with the mission or or.
This was, this was probably two weeks ago. I got a phone call.
I don't.
Chris, I think that was Cara. Cara called to get any additional information that you might have.
Okay.
Was it sent in or?
I've been kind of busy.
But for sure, it was Cara. It wasn't Kim and it wasn't Chris.
Okay. The long and the short of it is our charter is in the archives in the town of New London's basement area there. You're welcome to take a look at it. It's big, it's on parchment, and it's hard to read. We have a copy of it hanging on the wall of the lodge. I tried to take a picture of it today, but you just, it just doesn't work anyway.
But through the charter, you're identified as a domestic nonprofit.
No, no, not through the charter. The charter was, what year? 1802. The act of the legislature was 1862.
Right.
I have a copy of that, not with me, and I can furnish a copy.
Right, but what I'm getting at is so, but your chapter has never registered as a charitable entity with the Department of Justice.
I couldn't answer that question. I know that we're listed as a domestic nonprofit corporation.
Right, but the qualifier here does seem to be this matter of the charitable entity with the Department of Justice, and that you don't meet the definition of charitable. I don't know if you as an organization have looked at that more thoroughly, just in terms of determining.
I have to sit down for a second.
That's fine. That's fine. Any questions, Bill or Janet?
Well, I guess I'm confused. If you're awarding scholarships, I mean, isn't that a charitable undertaking for an organization that doesn't count? No.
It's not up for me to decide. It's, the Department of Justice would decide that.
And if they're not registered as a charitable organization, I think that's the crux. We've got to. I think one of the recommendations I'd make, Bill, unless you've got more questions or suggestions, is that we do a little more digging
Okay.
around the status and defer this at least to the next meeting, if that's okay, Chris.
That's fine, but it doesn't change the fact that they don't need the test.
I understand.
But sure.
Yeah. But I think it would be helpful if all parties understood. That's just my suggestion.
So, so I would, just to get the dynamics and pathways understood. If we went to the Department of Justice and received acknowledgement that we qualify as a charitable organization, would that be in? Would that be sufficient? Would it change your recommendation, Chris? Or would you simply disagree?
Well.
Which is fine.
Based on all of the input, trust me, before I came before this board, I wanted to make sure I was not wrong. It probably would not because there are Masons that are registered with the charitable trust unit. But they don't qualify as charities. They, they do that in order to run their casino nights or whatever thing they're running.
Right. I'm familiar with that aspect of it too.
I will tell you, I don't know if you've seen the order from the Board of Tax and Land Appeals and the the investigation that was done by the Department of Revenue, which you're very, you're more than welcome to look at this. They're firm. They're firm on this and, and I will also tell you that the it's not on the record, but I'll, I'll tell you what I know. The assessor that recommended the denial to the Osiphe Board is also under sanctions right now for doing, he, he recommended denying it, but went on to tell the board that they could have baited for good cause, which was an absolute mistake, basically, because that is not for good cause. So I would, I, I agree with Nancy. Let's do some more. I want you to see all this.
Well, I'm going to have somebody else see it all because I can tell you I'm not going to do it.
Okay.
I, I've reluctantly agreed to be the speaker tonight and I don't have time.
Yeah.
So, but.
I, I think Chris has done her due diligence. I'm just asking that we all do our due diligence and if we can get that eighteen sixty-two document, that may help as well and it may be helpful for you folks to understand what it does mean to be identified as a charitable, you know, what is the litmus test? You know, Janet has mentioned the scholarships. I know that there's the Thanksgiving dinner and some other things that you've done. But, you know, I, I, let's, let's look at it.
No, I, I agree completely.
Okay.
And I I, it just will be somebody else who contacts Chris to look at the details of that document. It just, it won't be me. But I'll make sure that it is somebody.
That's fine, just so that we can close the loop and have all the documentation.
And do it in a timely fashion.
It definitely needs to be done in a timely fashion because this has to be recommended before the tax rate is set.
Right.
Which was, which is when?
Yesterday.
Kim likes it done really quick, so we'll send our documents into the Department of Revenue for September one.
Okay.
Nancy, can I say something?
Yeah.
So I, I think the, the Board of Selectmen here is caught between good neighbor policy and doing the right thing for our friends and neighbors and a sticky legal situation because I'm feeling quite uncomfortable thinking about exposing the town to having to ask you to pay back taxes for several years. And in addition to that, being asked to, having Chris be asked to audit all of the charitable exemptions that we grant, and we've got some to do here tonight, we're sure most of the churches, all the churches in town and the hospital and, and so on. And it seems to me ultimately that in order to protect the interests of the town here, forgetting our good neighborly side of us, because you're our friends and so on. We probably, we do need to get more information, but it seems to me the ultimate path here is going to be for us to deny it, for you to appeal it to the BTLA and let them make the determination because they're the ones who otherwise will try to penalize the town.
That.
So it seems to me.
That might be a reasonable route.
We need to get our, this additional information that you provided here, but we do have an obligation first and foremost to protect the interests of the town here and it's a pretty clear documentation that the BTLA is not sympathetic and may well come and try to penalize the town. And I think we would not be well served to do that.
It would be better for the town if the King Solomon's Lodge appealed to the BTLA instead of the selectman being called the task by the BTLA.
That's what I'm saying.
I get that, but I appreciate the suggestion that you postpone the decision until your next meeting.
Right.
Giving us a chance to gather a bit more information and understand a little better the criteria and so on. And I appreciate that.
And we'll just look at what direction we need to go in here.
Right.
So, so the next meeting, Howard, unfortunately, is only a week from now.
Really?
Unusual schedule situation right now, but lest you get up and leave before we get to our schedule.
Perhaps, perhaps we have until September first.
No, but let's, let's see. I mean, I think that eighteen sixty-two document, if you had it, it was submitted, you know, let's, let's gather that and.
Can I just bring, can I just leave a copy at the front desk? Okay, then that's, I will do that tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. And thanks, Chris, on that piece. Do you want to go with the proposal for the recommendations?
I hope you have a copy of those.
Yes.
And trust and believe after this came up that I did go through and scrub everything, make sure we are compliant because that they're looking. Also, I, I do want to say, just on the record, and I'll be sending this to the organizations that are qualified when we send our reminder letters out in January that we've been a little bit flexible with deadlines. And that's not going to really happen anymore. The deadlines are the deadlines for everything. Abatements, veterans credits, elderly exemptions. The deadlines have to be followed because according to statute. So I, I, I just want people to kind of be on notice that that's what I'll be doing. However, all right, so. Based on all of my research and everything I looked over and all of the deadlines that are now met, I do recommend that the religious exemptions outlined are, are approved as well as the educational exemption for the college and the charitable exemptions listed on the paperwork below.
So I'll move that we approve the recommendations of the Chief Assessor as contained in her memorandum of July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two related to religious education and charitable exemptions.
Second. Do you have any questions?
I do. I, I wonder if I should step back from this because of the Ice House Foundation being a part of it. And since I am a kidder, I think that maybe that's a good idea. So I won't, I won't vote on this. I'll recuse myself on this.
Will you vote on all of them except that one?
Sure.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so why don't we make that motion first? That we accept all of Chris McAllister's recommendations for tax exempt status with the exception of the WK, WFK Ice House Foundation, Inc.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now I'll make the recommendation that we accept the request for tax exempt the WFK Ice House Foundation, Inc.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And Chris, asking for more information was, was not a reflection on any of the work that you've done. I think it seemed to me that perhaps the King Solomon Council doesn't clearly understand all of the depth of this, so, and I know it's very complicated.
It is complicated and it was actually a very educational experience for me. And I'm actually having the charitable trust unit come speak to our Association of Assessors, so everyone else is on board with this too.
Great. Okay, so moving on, discuss the Kier Sarge Classic Bike Event on August sixth.
Go ahead. Yep, the chief is gonna say a few words. She just wants to put the town on notice as to where the bicyclists will be coming through town.
With the change of time for the parade this year going to ten AM that conflicted with several events in town, as you know, the Waste Collection Day and things, but also the Kier Sarge Classic Bicycle Ride. So typically that would come up Pleasant Street and last year, I believe it was the first time they took a ride onto Cougar Court and used the outing club area as kind of like a rest stop, pit stop for them.
Right.
And so some of their riders would be coming in. The fifty-five mile riders, about a hundred and seventy-five of them would pass through between ten and eleven thirty, but that won't work with the parade going on now. So in late June, Arlen Chappie had reached out to Kim and then she sent it to me to just kind of finesse this a little bit more. So Lieutenant David Keith and I worked with Arlen and we came up with a new route that the bicyclists will be going through to avoid Main Street altogether. So that's why I wanted to make sure that the board knew about it and also so that it was in the minutes, so that the folks on this, this revised route for twenty twenty-two would be aware that they're going to see a, a large amount of bicycle traffic on those, their roads. So that is going to be, they're going to take Elkins Road all the way to the end, take a right onto Andover Road, Route eleven, pass through the Flying Goose intersection onto King Hill Road, then they'll take a right onto Old Main Street. They'll continue through onto Knights Hill Road. Then they'll take a left onto County Road, which dumps them back up to where their route would have been if they had had the Main Street one. So they'll take that left onto County Road and a left onto Stony Brook. They changed the location of their, their rest stop from Cougar Court, the school outing club area to the Presbyterian Church. So in our meeting, Lieutenant Keith had suggested the church gave Arlen the contact information we have for the church. So it worked out quite nicely. But we just, I wanted to make sure that folks knew there was a different route for the bicyclists this year. So that the folks on Old Main Street might be a little surprised in Knights Hill to see, you know, two hundred and twenty-five-ish, two hundred and fifty bicyclists between ten AM and twelve thirty PM. There's two waves of riders. One, one wave rides fifty-five miles and one wave of riders rides eighty-three miles. So there's one seventy-five and seventy-five, two fifty, two hundred and fifty riders, so.
Will there be any police presence up there? Just that I happened to ride down Old Main today and there is a lot of traffic still coming through there very fast.
I, I think unfortunately all of our, our police officers are going to be dedicated to the, the parade route and blocking off traffic there. So I don't anticipate having in any extra people or enough people to, to be up there, unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
All right. Thank you. We'll have a lot of people in town. Okay, approved encumbered funds from fiscal year twenty twenty-two is prepared by Finance Officer Lynn Lewis.
Right.
Who's on vacation.
She's on vacation. So stepping in for Finance Officer Lynn Lewis, I can say that she has compiled the list of those funds that were spent in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, but were purchases made in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So these are items that were ordered, but not, either not delivered or not paid for in the fiscal year. So we're required to make this list, the selectman approve it, and then the auditors will go over it. So in other words, it's, it's documentation as to why we wrote checks in fiscal year twenty twenty-three for items in the twenty twenty-two budget. So you can go through the list and she's listing them all. Total is seventy-seven thousand, six ninety and fourteen cents.
Okay. I move we accept and approve the encumbered funds report as prepared by Lynn Lewis. Is there any comment? Questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Town Administrator Report.
Sounds like we're getting thunder out there.
And a lot of rain.
And a lot of rain. We have valets if it's still raining when I leave. Okay. Okay, first, we got the state swim line permit for Elkins Beach today. While we have had a beach there, I don't know how many decades, apparently we're required to have a state permit for our swim line. So that came in today. Our friend Tim Dunleavy in the State Marine Patrol was helpful there. Putnam is working on the application for Buckland Beach. We're also working with the, bless you, we're also working with the group that sort of manages the mooring field in Elkins to make sure that the moorings are far enough away from the swim lines so that swimmers are safe. The Budget Committee members will be touring various town departments in August and I shared with all of you those dates. And so you're free to attend. All those meetings will be posted to the website. Dan Snyder of the Barn Playhouse reports that they got their final certificates of operation for the two elevators on the property. So I guess the project's pretty much completely done. He was very happy with the cooperation of the Board of Selectmen, Town Staff that helped, especially the Fire Department Safety Personnel, working with the state Fire Marshals for all the building permits. So he's very happy. And finally, the sale of King Hill Road, that was a subject of two town meetings, was completed and the forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollar sale price for that King Hill property will be going into the town's general fund. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, committee meetings and reports. The Housing Commission met last night and is finalizing another panel that will include developers of workforce housing and we will be holding that here on September fourteenth because there was a conflict with Colby Sawyer. But we have the panel lined up and a facilitator and we'll begin to do the promotion of that. So it's a continuation of the discussion.
The new Waste Reduction Committee got launched last week and have agreed to meet every two or three weeks on Thursday mornings. Ms. Meller was elected the Chair of that group and they are in the process of refining and providing us with a proposed charge for the committee. Their initial activities, as you'll see in their minutes, are going to focus on compostable waste and on plastics. But they're all, they're a very enthusiastic group.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, approval of meeting minutes. Are we okay to approve June twenty-third?
I've not seen them up to tonight.
Okay, so we want to defer. Okay, how about July fourteenth?
Still same, same message.
Okay. Yes, we do. Yeah. Okay, we have the litany of upcoming meetings and events. Any other business to come before the Board of Selectmen?
Did you mention that we are meeting next week? I know Bill mentioned it, but to explain why.
Go ahead.
We have been meeting the second and fourth Thursdays, but we are going to the first and third because the school board meets the second and fourth. So we will be here in August to enjoy the air conditioning here. So that's why we're going to be here and that's why we switched.
Nancy, I'd like to propose that we move to a non-public session under RSA 91-3, colon, 3, comma, 2A and D, A for personnel and D for buying, selling, or leasing a real property.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Do, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Aye.
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 Okay. So we will go into non-public session. Thank you, everybody. John? Just for the month of August. Again, it's because we wanted to continue to have the air conditioning until we're. I hope everyone has a raincoat or umbrella or can run quickly.
Good luck. Call a valet.